Chairperson of the Cannabis Control Board and I'm calling this public hearing to order. It is November 20th, Friday, 5:35 PM. We are conducting this physically from the Governor's Large Conference Room in Atalou. And tonight is the second in our series of three public scheduled public hearings on the rules proposed by the Cannabis Control Board pursuant to Section 8110 of the Guam Cannabis Industry Act. In light of the current COVID restrictions, we are also broadcasting and encouraging public participation via Zoom. The hearing will continue tomorrow as well from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So the public may opt to continue participating through Zoom. Or if they would like to present in-person oral testimony, they can do so by coming to the Governor's Large Conference Room where they will be admitted consistent with the COVID-related gathering restrictions. Present today at the Governor's Large Conference Room is Member of the Board Director, Director of the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. Members of the Board present via Zoom are Secretary Ursula Herrera, Adrian Cruz, Deputy Director of the Department of Agriculture, Niko Fujikawa, Representative of the Guam Visitors Bureau, Zita Pangolinen, Representative of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. And I understand, and just joining us is Director Daphne Shimizu of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Members of the Board not present but who should be joining us later are Chief Steven Ignacio, the Chief of Police, and William Parkinson. I anticipate they're joining us later. Welcome and thank you. Thank you Director Ariola for being our member present physically down at the conference room. And thank you all to the members of the Board again for continuing to devote your evenings this week to these public hearings. And welcome and thank you to all of the participants today who have joined us on Zoom. We really appreciate you coming to participate, provide your testimony and to be heard and provide input on these proposed rules. I want to thank again our team at the Department of Revenue and Taxation who have been working hard since our inception in April 2019 throughout this pandemic and tonight and throughout the evening and the weekend. I think it's Craig and Gerard down at the Atalou. We really appreciate it, all your hard work in addition to your daily grind at Rev and Tax. So thank you again. Copies of the proposed rules are available on file. Physical copies are available at the Department of Agriculture Director's Office in Milau together with a copy of the Preliminary Cost Impact Assessment of these proposed rules. Copies of the proposed rules and Preliminary Cost Impact Assessment are also available at the Department of Revenue and Taxation's website in order to maximize the opportunity for members of the public to examine the rules. I'll go ahead and type that link in there in the chat box for those who are on Zoom. For the record, it's HTTPS:www.gwamtax.com/CCB/index.html. The purpose of tonight's public hearing, the second public hearing, is to afford any interested party or if they are an entity, a business organization, their authorized representative, an opportunity to present facts, argument, or submit written data or views for consideration in the implementation of the rules as we have proposed them. To that end, we also accept and will have accepted and will continue to accept written testimony. You may do that through the end of these public hearings which close on Saturday, November 21st, tomorrow at 5:00 PM. And you can submit your written testimony by emailing it to GuamCCB@revtax.gwam.gov. So tonight, for those of you who are present, we're going to call on you. We'd ask that you sign up. I see one person, Monique, has already signed in. Go ahead and sign in by identifying yourself in the chat and we'll go ahead and log and note who signed up, first come, first served, and you will be able to submit your oral testimony tonight. So go ahead and put your name in the chat and we will note you and call you in the order that you've identified yourself. When it is your turn, we ask that in consideration of allowing sufficient time for the Board to ask any follow-up questions of those testifying and to allow sufficient time for the remainder of remaining individuals who might be testifying after you to just be considerate of the time and try to keep your testimony within 15 minutes. And for those who, if we get more, if we get more people who sign up to testify tonight and we cannot reach you this evening, we will continue tomorrow at 9:00 AM. I also, so I see Member William Parkinson has joined us. Thank you, Will. So I think that covers all of our ground rules. I would go ahead and ask that Monique Amani, go ahead and turn on your mic. If you're representing an organization, you can go ahead and state that for the record. And you have the floor for 15 minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, off today, everyone. My name is Monique Amani. I'm currently one of the owners of Mosa's joint. I've been looking into starting an edibles place for a while now, working on it and looking forward to making some of my managers and supervisors be a part of this as well to uplift them and also to uplift more of the young entrepreneurs on Guam. And I didn't know about the hearing yesterday. I just found out about it today. I just want to voice my opinion on how I am totally against this vertical integration. Letting people have the control in such small groups is going to cause a monopoly and it's not going to give anybody a chance to start new businesses, small businesses. And that's what we need on Guam. That's what we're struggling with right now. And during this pandemic, I've noticed that the small businesses are the ones that are getting messed with all the time. All the people that have big businesses and corporations, they've been able to stay open the whole time. And this seems like this is going in that same direction and it's not fair at all. There's a lot of small, young entrepreneurs that have put a lot of time and money and went to schools for this, that they don't have thousands and millions of dollars to do anything big on a big scale. So they have to start off on a small scale. And with that being said, it's just, it's horrible to think that there's just going to be a monopoly on Guam with maybe five or six businesses holding all these licenses. I totally disagree with it. And I have a lot of people that I've heard in the past say that they are going to buy all the monopolies and they're going to buy everything that they possibly can. And they're rich and I'm not rich. And there's a lot of young entrepreneurs out there that aren't rich, that can't pay $100,000 or whatever it is. And all the prices that are out right now seem reasonable to me for someone to start a small business. But if anyone is serious about starting a business, they'll come up with that money just like I did when I started my business 11 years ago. And I've had loyal and amazing workers and managers and supervisors that have moved up that I want them to have the same thing that I had, but helping them out along the way. And if this goes the other direction and there's only big corporations that are going to own this or off-island people coming to our island buying those because they have more money than anyone on Guam, like Chinese, like other nationalities, that money is not going to stay on Guam. The biggest thing about this whole bill being passed is to bring money on Guam and keep it on Guam and to help the people of Guam. And if this turns into something else and there's just certain people that can own these licenses, it's not going to help Guam at all. The money's going to be sent off island. It's going to be a monopoly. So all these people, all these young people, entrepreneurs, aren't going to be able to start their businesses. This is something they've been studying on, something they've been practicing just like I have for the past couple of years. And it's something I truly believe in. And it's not just getting high, it's also helping people medicinal marijuana, helping older people, manukku that are, that you know, have arthritis or pains and stuff like that. And big corporations don't care about that stuff. They just want to make money. And I'm sick and tired of seeing this on Guam. All the big businesses are the ones that are running this island and it's shown more than ever during this pandemic. And I'm sure all the big businesses are against what I'm saying, but I don't really care. I'm for this island and I've always been for this island. And as far as I'm concerned, this, this is kind of ridiculous. And I'm sorry I didn't attend the meeting yesterday. I wish I would have known about it. I'm actually at work right now because taking a break. But that's pretty much all I had to say. And I also think that all the weed that is going out from Guam should be tested and it should be from Guam. We shouldn't be bringing, if we can have the capability of growing it all on Guam, it needs to stay on Guam. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Monique. If you have a couple of minutes, I think I want to see if members of the Board have questions for you.
Sorry, my headphones are real short.
Any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Monique and also reassure her that this is a series of public hearings. So you know, similar to the opportunity for you to testify today, there were people yesterday that testified and obviously in a difference of an opinion of yours, but in no way is weighted just because they were there on the first day. All opinions and testimonies will be considered equally. So I just want to thank you for your testimony and know that just because you didn't make it yesterday, it's okay. All three days are just as equal.
Okay, I appreciate it. You guys have a good evening.
Thank you. Monique, do you have a couple more minutes?
Oh yeah, sorry.
Adrian?
Sure. Thanks for your testimony. Just to make some things clear, whatever cannabis is grown on Guam only will have to stay here. We don't have an export capability. And the second thing is that, thank you for your comment. It will be taken into consideration. We heard a lot of comments about the same subject yesterday. There aren't going to be, as far as we're concerned, we're not planning on limiting the license, but we do hear your concern about how larger businesses might benefit one way or another. So thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
No other Board members have questions? I have one follow-up question, just to clarify. Monique, so are you testifying that you are against requiring vertical integration or you're against allowing any vertical integration?
I just believe that licenses should not be limited at all whatsoever. Like people should be able, anybody should be able to get a license as long as they can come up with the money to get it. And it shouldn't be limited to five or six people buying all of the licenses and having their friends buy all the licenses. I don't, I don't think there should be a limited number or all these big companies are going to buy all of those licenses. Because there's so many different scales of marijuana growing. There's, you know, there's growing and then there's selling and then I just want a small little shop and I want to give my people a chance to become a part of a business that they are also starting themselves to also encourage them to start their own businesses in the future too. And I think that's a big thing that this island needs to focus on instead of focusing on all these bigger businesses just getting richer.
Oh, so once again, Monique, we have no plans. It's not in our rules to limit the amount of licenses. I just want to be clear because I'm not quite sure what you're getting at. So the thing that I think the rest of us are thinking about when we hear vertical is the ability to have all three licenses in one company. Is that, is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, I mean, that's basically what I was pretty much saying, I believe.
So you're against that? You're against?
I don't, I don't think any company should be able to buy all three licenses. It's just like a liquor, like a liquor license. A liquor license, you can't distribute and own a restaurant. You can't do both. So why should marijuana be any different?
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for clarifying that. Any other members have questions for Monique? Okay, thank you so much for taking time out of your evening tonight to testify. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Before we move to the next sign-in, just a couple of comments. I forgot to mention and shout out to probably the hardest working woman tonight, Camila Nicholas from Rev and Tax. She's making sure that our record and transcript is complete. So thank you. We really appreciate that. And then I also, I wanted to clarify because I see Mr. Roland Kitequa entered into the chat. I just clarified, we did have Hugh Giordano sign up to testify next prior in an email. So we're going to call him and then we'll get to you, Mr. Kitequa. So Hugh, if you are present, you can go ahead and have the floor for up to 15 minutes.
Yes, hello, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Excellent, great. First off, I want to thank you Chairperson and the rest of the committee for having this. I think it's very important to have dialogue from different groups for how adult legislation should be passed and regulated. I first want to say that I watched the entire hearing yesterday and I want to thank Adrian Cruz, Committee Men Cruz, for stepping up for workers, patients, and consumers' rights for your agriculture protections as far as pesticides. New Jersey has an all-organic system here. They have, you know, they use aquaponics, they use coconut husk to grow. There's other forms of doing it. It can be done, it's being done now. And I like the way that you said that it would improve and push other forms of agriculture to go that way as well. So it's better for the environment and for the land. So I commend you on that. So thank you. I just wanted to, so I'm here representing United Food and Commercial Workers Union, Local 480, on behalf of President Pat Liu. Pat Liu's local representative, not only Hawaii, but also the territories, that's his jurisdiction. And the United Food and Commercial Workers Union is the official labor union which represents cannabis and hemp workers from seed to sale. We represent cannabis workers in North America and we are working on other territories as well to make sure that those workers have the same rights under the law. The reason workers' rights is important is for a few reasons. First off, workers are the first line of defense for patients and consumers. Even though laws are on the book in other states to not use illegal pesticides and other things, it happens, laws get broken. And unfortunately, when workers don't have a backup system or a form of protection, they have to keep their mouth shut or they get blackballed in the industry. And then I've seen it happen and it does happen and it's unfair. And there's many cases of that. One case was in Maine, some many years ago when they started their medical program. So that's why we believe that workers are the first line of defense and that's why workers' rights language must be put into the rules and regs. What we are suggesting to protect the citizens of Guam is to make labor peace agreements part of the rules and regulations along with project labor agreements for the build-out and retrofit. This does a few things. One, as we know, agricultural workers are not protected under National Labor Relations Act and companies use that on the federal level to block workers from unionizing, specifically cultivation workers. Cannabis is a trade, it's a craft. Growers are not just throwing the seed into the ground and calling it a day. It's science, it's chemistry, and it's horticulture all in one. It's, and these workers should be treated no differently than a carpenter or an iron worker. When they're at work, they're craftspeople and they should be treated as such through the whole system, even on the retail side. The retail, being a retail worker is a craft and they deal directly with consumers and patients. They are leafy on legs, they have to know every strain, how it impacts that person, how it affects medication. So we believe these workers deserve a living wage. Labor peace agreement would also make sure that workers will not be retaliated against when trying to form a union. This makes sure that it's a neutral agreement. It doesn't force the workers to join the union, but what it does is it makes a neutral playing field. It makes a partnership. And that's one thing I want to say offhand is that I love the way this bill is written. I love the fact that it's written that 51% of ownership must be from a citizen of Guam or three years or more in good standing. That's great. And I think that small businessmen and women are working people. So what we look to do is to work with the business community and the industry to set up an apprenticeship program. Since we are the official labor union under the American Federation of Labor, which is the umbrella of all the labor unions in North America and territories, we will look to start an apprenticeship program to make sure that Guam citizens are trained to work with industry, to take that cost off. We know that when workers are trained and treated well and respected, they'll make it careers and not jobs. That means that the quality and consistency of the cannabis will be good for not only the adult-use consumer, but we also have to protect the medical industry as well and make sure patients get high-quality medicine. And when there's turnover, that affects. And we don't, you know, and now with, there's other competition within the territories now, you know, workers are transient. We want to make sure the best workers are there and they stay there until they retire and get their union pension. Looking also, and if I go past my time, please tell me I'll stop, okay? Also looking at just your industries as a whole, cannabis touches all the industries that you have the most jobs in, which transportation, production, installation, building in ground, architecture. There's going to be an economic boom here, but we have to make sure that the economic boom also goes to the working class and to the citizens. In our view, a boss is a boss, no matter what color they are, no matter what religion they are, no matter what gender they are, a boss is a boss. And workers' deserves know when they go to work that they're free with respect. And we believe that also that the territories have been forgotten by the mainland. And we believe that we can be a good voice in DC along with the cannabis industry, patients, and other activist groups to stand up for Guam, to make sure that there is funding to the universities for scientific and studies, to make sure that there is training and apprenticeship programs. And eventually, you brought up a good point about the exportation. Oregon did pass an exportation law, so maybe Guam and Oregon could be the first to export to each other one day. So there's a lot of here. We're a 1.3 million member labor union and we have allies in Asia and Europe too. So this is bigger than just Guam and eventually this is going to be a global industry with trade and we want to be a partner in that. And that's why we think we're asking for labor peace to be added into the rules and regulations. New Jersey is, has, right now has the best workers protections in North America and we would like you to copy that same legislation and have it in the Guam legislation as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are you able to email your comments to us, especially with regards to the type of legislation that you would like added into these rules?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano. Is there any other, are there any other members of the Board who have questions for him?
I'd just like to make a comment, Madam Chair.
Director Ariola?
I think back in, thank you, Mr. Giordano, for your testimony. I believe it was in September that you first reached out to the Board. And I know that you, I think, reached out to my deputy, Karissa Pangolinen, who then sent it to me who sits on the Board. So I want to thank you for your interest in following our process and our progress as we get to finalizing the, get to the point where we finalize and approve the rules and regulations. So similar to, I just want to recognize your efforts of tracking and watching us as we go along. And I just also want to, please do provide us, you mentioned, I believe it was the New Jersey Rules and Regs that has the strongest labor piece that you're recommending for us to look at. Again, as Board Member Adrian had mentioned, if you can please send that to us as well, that'd be very helpful.
Yes, I will do that. And again, I want to thank you and your staff and also Mr. Cruz, I know you responded me too and Mr. William Parkinson also responded to me. I want to thank you all for taking the time to do that. Guam has a great setup. You definitely do care about social equity. I can tell out the way the bill's already written for ownership. And I think Guam has, can take the next step and care about workers too because social equity and workers' rights are the same thing. Thank you.
Do you have any other comments or questions from the Board? Mr. Giordano, I had a follow-up question. So are the labor peace agreement or model New Jersey, is that, was that in a law enacted by your legislature or was it something created at the regulatory level?
So it was done by the legislature, but it has been done in other states at the regulatory level. And there's other ways of doing it too. You can do social equity through a point system, through a merit-based application system. And that way you make sure that you get not only folks that know what you're doing and have, and I watched yesterday, you seem to have a great group of working-class, small business folks who are already into the industry, understand how it works, you know, so, and they can all, and there's also ways you can put workers' rights and community outreach and other ways into those applications. New Jersey and New York, Illinois did the same thing. And there's other states that are doing, that are working on that as we speak, that are working on labor peace, Rhode Island, Delaware, New York for adult-use legislation, they have it for medical. So, but New Jersey got done through medical, through legislation, and it's coming through the adult-use program right now. The adult-use language is actually even stronger than the medical. So I got to give them credit.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah, no problem. Oh, the bill is S21 if you, for the Jersey, but I'll send it to you as well.
Oh, perfect. I will really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Giordano. It's nice to finally hear from you. I echo Director Ariola's sentiments. I know that you were trying to reach out to us throughout the pandemic and, and we weren't able to speak with you and hear from you until now, but you provided really valuable perspective and information. I look forward to seeing your written data and the, and the bill and the regs that you have to share with us.
Absolutely. I'll make sure, I'll make sure it's in before 5 o'clock as stated. And again, you do a great job as a commission to reaching out to your citizens. So keep it up. You can, you can set the rest of the standards for even the states of how things should be done properly. You do a great job, so keep it up, all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano.
No problem.
Okay, next we have signed up is Mr. Roland Kitequa. Mr. Kitequa, if you, are you there?
Madam Chair?
Hi, Mr. Kitequa.
I'm currently on the road, so I'll just listen for now and I'll check back in with you when I reach my destination.
Okay, well, I'll have you on the list. Okay, next we have signed up Ms. Bistra Mandiola Arledi from formerly Lady Cosmetics.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Just let me know if you cannot because my computer is kind of old.
Sure, if you could turn on your video, please.
Yes, one moment. That's my first time zooming, I apologize. Haven't caught up to the whole, there, now I can see. Hi, good evening, everyone. As I wrote, as I wrote on my chat, my name is Bistra Mandiola. I'm a hand crafter so far. And the reason why I wanted to come in was kind of to present the other side of the camp. I'm sure that there's a lot more people that actually would like to get more than one license and... And here is why I believe that that shouldn't be a problem. As a sofer cosmetics, handcrafted cosmetics maker, my product has a lot more value to the end consumer by them knowing that this was indeed a crafted product. As a previous speaker said, the cannabis industry is a trade, is a craft, that's true. Because there are a lot of people out there that have turned the growing process as that, a true craft. And there is vast amount of knowledge and science behind it. Now, in my particular case, why I'm chiming in is because I would like to provide more value to my end product, to the end consumer, and retain the profit from growing to the end product as a cosmetic. I truly believe that I would need to have the license to manufacture or grow. And if I don't, then after all the taxes are imposed on any crafter like me, I'm not a big corporation, I'm just a regular person. After all taxes are being imposed and all the fees are paid, then the profit margin will be very minimal. So I believe that if we allow small cottage industries, that I've been hearing about cottage industry trying to make some kind of breakthrough on Guam, and all of our politicians are talking about it. But so far I've heard not much real plan and proposals and ideas as to how can we grow that cottage industry? And there you go, you have one real-life example here. Handcrafted cosmetic, which means any soap or body lotion, anything that's done to beautify or improve your skin, right? If that can be produced from point A to point Z by one company, that company retains the QC in the process, all the knowledge is there. And I believe that the end product will be much, much better versus me, I buy the raw material from one farm, not knowing what went into that product. How would I know that that product will be high-quality unless I have been involved in the process? So that's my point of view. I do agree with the point that we should not allow big monopoly in the business, that's true. However, you already took care of that when you, when you said that the business should be at least 51% owned by locals, which is great. So I personally don't think that holding more than one license and completely dismissing the value of vertical integration, I don't think that that would be a problem. And another example I can give you, about 10 years ago, I went back home, I'm originally from Bulgaria, Southeast Europe, where, thank God, these guys, they have a very nice farming industry and their self-sustainability is much, much better than what we have here in Guam. I sat down at a restaurant on the road, on a major highway, and I found out that the meat that I was eating at the restaurant was produced in such vertical type of farm business. The owner raised, slaughtered and cooked his own cattle and pigs. And the product was superb. I've never tasted better product ever. So to reiterate that, not always vertical integration is bad. I believe it's quite the opposite, the end value and the end quality could be superior. So thus ends my comment here. Now, the second part of me chiming in here would be a question to the board. Regarding the application process, I did notice that the proposed business needs to establish a business license first and then they need to apply for the actual license from the board. Is that correct?
I think I'd say yes, and then I don't know, Director Shimizu from DRT, if you want to provide any comment to that? Because I did see another inquiry from the public about that, some confusion about this license and a cannabis establishment license.
The steps to get to that establishment license, I did notice that it was, that was the case. First, you need to obtain, you must show that you are a licensed business with the DRT. And then you can go ahead and do the rest of the application process. Now, so I know that sometimes there are a lot of delays. I've personally been through the process of business licensing. And sometimes it could be very tedious task. So let's say that we, that I obtain a grower and a hand manufacturer, just hypothetically, I need to apply for both. And I first need to get that business license from DRT. Okay, let's say I pass, I get it, and then I don't get approved on the second round. So my concern would be what happens next? Because I would have paid my dues and fees to DRT. And let's say in the worst, worst, worst-case scenario, I don't get the license from your board membership. That initial expense will be already paid out. And who knows when I'm going to get that business license back, because that's happened to me in the past. So thus, that's my concern. I just want to understand the process. Is it really necessary to obtain business license first before you get an actual permit? Get-go, okay, your establishment's absolutely top-notch fine, and then proceed. It's just, I just want to understand the logic behind it, if you could explain to me. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that question. So with regards to the way that we, I guess, had contemplated this, we looked at our ABC laws. And so, you know, with regards to ABC, the alcohol beverage control laws, which actually, you know, also fall under the Department of Revenue and Taxation. When we were looking to determine how we were going to set this up, we actually looked at those laws. When you're going to have an establishment that, you know, sells liquor or sells, you know, alcohol, we actually have a similar process, and so that was what we kind of equated it to. If there's, you know, of course, concerns, comments about that, that's something that, of course, we could look at. And, you know, of course, is why we're having this comment period. But really, we worked to try to replicate that process again, because that's, you know, our current process that we have in place.
Yeah, it can get very tedious. And sometimes it's hard to, yeah, I'm not even talking about the current COVID situation, just in general. As I said, I've been a small-business owner for about 20 years now, so I'm quite. I just, thank you for looking at the current alcoholic beverage licensing process. So yeah, that explains it. However, would there be any improvement to that and how would both departments work together? Because that, that could be a very big setback sometimes timeline-wise. And we all know that time is of essence. Especially when we open a business, correct? So, yeah, thank you. I think that answered my question, but just to, to put it on the record, please do make that comment into account, because I'm not, I'm sure that I'm not the only one who's been there, done that, and knows how hard it could be and time-wise. Yeah.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Mendiola, for that comment. And you know what, we'll definitely take that into consideration as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
No problem.
Have a, have a great one. You can give the mic to someone else. I appreciate your time.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions or comments for Ms. Mendiola? Well, thank you. Definitely, those are, we hear your concerns. That's the point of this hearing, to point out those concerns, and we're definitely going to consider it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roland Kitequa, are you ready to testify?
I would like to later on. I'm still on the road.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I thought I saw the camera. So I'll schedule you for later this evening. Okay. Next, I, so I'm trying to keep up with the comments. I believe Devin Suzuki had wanted to sign up to testify. Or I wasn't sure, Devin, if you were making a comment or if you wanted to testify again tonight on behalf of Atmosphere Cannabis Collective.
Hi, Chair. Sorry, I'm just, I was just commenting. I want to let everyone else speak first. That's okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much, though.
Okay, if there's anyone else who's just joined, and the way we are proceeding tonight is if you are here on Zoom and you would like to present oral testimony, go ahead and just type your name in the chat box, identify yourself that you would like to present, and we will call on you in the order that you're signed up. Then I think I saw, and I'm not sure if this, Mr. David Cruz had wanted to, he said, I'd like to comment. I'm not sure if it was to provide additional testimony tonight or was in the chat box. Mr. Cruz?
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, so, so we were just discussing, and I think that you should build a protection for businesses in regards to importing, because importing, once you allow importation, then the money leaves the island. And then it goes into big.
If I, if I may, sir. So in our rules and per the federal law, we cannot import or export, period. But that's just the way it is.
In the case.
But in the event that a federal legalization happens, is there a way that the government can create protections so we can prevent importation from coming here?
It would just have to be a tax, because of course, you know, in the American system, there is the interstate commerce clause, which means that us in the United States have no tariffs or duties that we can impose on each other. So no, that is not, that is not possible.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Just trying to keep it all here locally.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Okay, Andrea Pellicani, I see you wanted to comment or exact, to provide our testimony this evening.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to, thank you for allowing me to speak again. I just wanted to give some insight or background into the licensing process, because we vetted this process like backwards and forwards during the medical discussions as well. The whole idea was to be able to give local businesses the ability to bootstrap, right? Because we obviously don't have a whole lot of money here, and most people will have to get some sort of investment capital. And so the idea is to understand how the investments process works, right? So when you get an investment for your seed round, this is the most risky round. And this is where people end up giving away a good portion or chunk of their company for that seed investment, because it's risky. Now, if you go out and you get your Series A money after you get a license, this allows you to keep more control over your company and gives you more of an ability to get loans or that type of investment rather than providing equity, an equity share. And so the way the licensing process works, if, you know, you want to sort of conceptualize it. When Senator Justin Augustine passed a bill, because people weren't able to get licenses at DRT under the medical program, so he passed a bill that would authorize the life, the business licensing for that at DRT. But that's contained within the medical code. And I'm not sure if additional legislation would be needed, needed. And what that, what that piece of legislation did was it allowed for people to get their licenses without having to go through the whole clearinghouse. And maybe Director Shimizu can provide some insight into that. Typically, when you would go get your business license, you need fire clearance, you need, you know, tax clearance, you need all of that. Well, what this did was it allowed people to get their business license, so they can go and then buy land, go and negotiate lease agreements and be able to, again, bootstrap, right? With minimal, minimal capex at that point, because you don't have anything, you don't have a license, you don't have anything. And then also, you know, when you're talking about purchasing land, lease is already questionable, because this is cannabis, it's not good to lease, your contract could get thrown out of court. It's, there are legal issues that need to be considered when entering into leases. And so the idea is that you would go to DRT, get your business license with minimal clearinghouse requirements, as they normally do. Then you would put your plan together, you can hire a consultant to help you look for land, help you put your business together, and you put a plan forth. Then you take that plan and then you put it forth to Department of Public Health and Social Services. Now, so Public Health and Social Services reviews the plan. If your plan meets everything that they're requiring by law, then you get a license. At that point, now you can take that license, you can go and get funding, you could go and purchase your land, you could, and because you can get now the investment money, again, without having to give, give away too much equity into your company. And it allows you a period of time. So then, when you get your permit, in that process between licensing and permitting, you could increase your investment ability at a much better rate, because you have a license, which is a less risky venture, you know. Imagine if you were going to give away, give somebody $2 million to build a business, would you rather do it when they have a business license, or would you rather, you know, it's a more, it's a more secure investment for you if the person actually has a cannabis license? So between that time, between licensing and permitting, you put your plan forth. But you guys, that's the thing, you guys got rid of the plan portion, right? You guys got rid of the plan portion for the licensing. That was a really important component to granting the license, because it allowed the people to take their plan and shop it around and get investment money. So when, you know, when you get your license, then you could take your plan, get your investment money, you could go purchase your land, you could build out, and then, you know, put your SOPs and everything, all that into place, and then you apply for your permit. Upon the application for permitting, that's when you would go through the clearinghouse process. You get your fire inspection, you get your, you know, whatever agricultural license and everything that you guys are requiring at that point and not at the licensing. So I just wanted to provide that insight, and maybe Director Shimizu can elaborate if she sees any potential problems or, because I do at this point, because the licensing process was changed. And that's how it was envisioned, to be able to allow locals a better ability or give them a leg up in trying to get more investment money without having to give away more of their businesses. So I just wanted to add that insight into how it was done previously.
And thank you, Andrea, for that, for that comment. Business licenses in general, how it works for startup companies, and this is not necessarily specific to this particular industry, but it's something that, you know, we've talked about at Rev and Tax, is there's what's called an administrative business license. And so it's basically, it's an administrative activity. And what happens is for true startups, of course, as you brought up, Andrea, when you come, when you're, I guess, just starting up, and of course, you know, you don't yet have the ability to, you know, take on the activity that you actually intend to do. You know, there's still work that needs to be done, groundwork. For example, as you mentioned, perhaps getting contracts, working, you know, with your legal, your lawyers to, you know, get loans, perhaps also even to, you know, set up a bank account. And so an administrative business license allows for that process. Generally, an administrative business license is allowed only for about a year. And so, again, it is possible. You know, a business license is associated with a specific activity. So the activity, of course, this would not allow for you to retail, you know, any, any type of product. It would just give you the ability, again, to set, set up shop, basically, you know, again, to do, you know, to have, again, the opportunity to open up bank accounts, get loans, you know, again, to, you know, to show that, that, you know, you are, you're serious about what you're doing. And of course, to be able to work up to, perhaps, if you're building a building or, again, getting leases as you're working to, you know, find space for your product or space to, to do cultivation. That's what this business license would do. And already, we have a process in place for that in general already. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for that, they, they, they didn't advise of that before for the medical, and, and so that's why they had to pass that law, so it's good to know that, that that portion is already taken care of, thank you.
Thanks so much Andrea.
Oh, muted myself, sorry about that. Thank you Andrea for your comments, and, and the incorrect Director Shimizu for clarifying. Any other members of the board have any comments or questions for Andrea? If not, I am going to move to our next sign-in, Ms. Denise Salk. Denise Salk, are you still online with us?
Yes, can you see me? This is my first time using Zoom, I'm sorry.
No problem, we see you, we hear you, welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much for this opportunity to present my testimonial. Okay, it is a fact that small businesses are the backbone of the American society, just as very small businesses are vital to the economy of Guam. Small businesses can take this opportunity to diversify and survive this pandemic, and new entrepreneurs can follow their dream and start a new company. There are several important points to consider regarding to proposed rules and regulations that favor the big companies and wealthy groups, which have created barriers to entry in the cannabis business. Oligopoly. If the intent of the committee and legislature is to only accept five businesses into the new cannabis industry, they will be creating an oligopoly. This is incomprehensible, especially during this time when people are trying to find ways to survive. This only creates advantages for the wealthy, and completely blocks entrepreneurs from entry into this market. Oligopolies enhance possibility of collusion and interdependence between the preferred firms, limits product differentiation, higher prices and reduced output, manipulation of consumer decision-making, and the list goes on. Preferential treatment for the wealthy was voted out this past presidential election, amongst other issues. This can happen on Guam if the people feel cheated out of opportunities equal for all. Fees. The proposed application and renewal fees are high because of, because of the pandemic. Many businesses are shut down and had to rely on the CARES Act to help carry their business or burn through savings that could be used for capital expenditures and application fees. Only the wealthier businesses benefit from the higher fees. Foreign and off-island firms. Licenses should be limited to Guam-based firms to ensure that money generated from cannabis businesses are circulated in the economy, stay in the economy, and taxes to be paid to benefit the local government, which help local residents. Vertical integration. In theory, this is a good point, but again, wealthy groups can create several companies and vertically integrate. The government of Guam cannot even track fake made in Guam goods to protect the Guam product seal participants. It is not likely that the government of Guam will be able to follow paper trails to investigate vertically integrated firms. These rules and regulations may have started out with good intentions, but the committee needs to be realistic and tone down the pie in the sky dream, and face reality. Cannabis was legalized. By blocking the chance for any residence or business, the opportunity in the cannabis industry, you could be creating a gray or black market, which will be a loss for GovGuam and millions of dollars in taxes. We have a pandemic, businesses are failing, people cannot pay health insurance, people have lost jobs. Do the right thing before the people vote you out of your job, thank you.
Thank you Denise. Does any, any members of the board have questions, or Ms. Salk?
Thank you Ms. Salk, this is Adrian Cruz. Just to be clear, the board has no intention and never did to limit the amount of licenses. We, we don't, we aren't limiting the amount of licenses, and thank you for your comment for that. And, and your other points were well taken, the points on vertical integration, the points on being able to track things, thank you for your comment.
Thank you Adrian.
Thank you Mr. Cruz.
Are there any other comments or questions from the board? I did have a question, I mean, that's the second time I've heard a concern about vocalized about limiting the, or putting a cap on the number of licenses that can be provided, and that isn't anywhere in the proposed rules, so I'm just wondering where that belief came from.
Um.
You're not the only one that says that, that's just why I.
It's spreading, I'm sorry to interrupt, it's spreading like wildfire, wildfire through Guam, just to let you know. That, and, and that two foreign companies, two large foreign companies are being considered. And, and that is unsettling, because we'd like to give local companies a chance, and not these large conglomerates off-island where the money will be siphoned off-island.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, that is unsettling, because I've never heard that, and, but, and so I'm just, but my, my concern is that there might be something in the actual language of the proposed rules that's giving, that is confusing to the public, or is misleading, that the public's basing this belief on. But, it doesn't sound like that's the case. My, I, I think that's my, my only question. Do we have any follow-up questions or comments from the board?
Thank you Madam Chair, my, my concern was just that line of questioning as well. Where, and, and I know the, the presenter mentioned it's spreading like wildfire. I have not heard of that either, so is there a specific news outlet, or, 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 I don't know, is it Facebook? I mean, where, where is this coming? Like, where are you reading it, if it's spreading like wildfire?
I'm, I'm not reading it from any documents, or didn't get it from any media per se. It just, you know, word of mouth on Guam. It's just going through, you know, the internet, through, through chat site.
I see. So is it, is, so is it, I mean, you're hearing that we're already approved to? Because, you know, the rules approved foreign, is that, is that what you're hearing? That foreign companies are being considered for license?
It was, it was in a discussion, I don't remember, I think by what was in the Zoom meeting yesterday, is, is what I'm hearing, things that were discussed in the, in a Zoom meeting yesterday or the day before, I can't remember. The person just quickly, and that's when I ran home to start typing out my type testimonial. But, no, it is, it is going around, and a lot of people are thinking that this is what's going to happen, so just to let you know.
We appreciate letting us know, and if, and if you find out, you know, like the platform in which it's going around, we definitely, when the rules and regs are approved and finalized, we'll definitely have a, a marketing campaign to ensure that any of those notions, after the rules and regs are, are passed and finalized, you know, a proper public relation, a public campaign for educational campaign will definitely happen. So that, so that any of those concerns will be laid to rest.
Okay, and, and the fees too, I think also may have been a part of it, because that's indicative to only the wealthy firms are able to afford entering into this, this new industry. In the states, in many of the states, they don't have these $10,000, $20,000. That is incomprehensible. And, I mean, even alcohol licensing, what is it, $12, $1,200 a year? Recreational drug, just like alcohol is a recreational drug. So 20, $10,000, $20,000, you, you are creating barriers to entry, and also limiting it, again, to just the wealthy.
We also have, excuse me, we also have smaller license sizes in there that are not barriers to entry for the smaller business owners. I do believe we have, was it $500 licenses in there?
Well, I'll have to take a look, because, because the first one that I read, maybe PDN, the PDN that published it at the very beginning had $10,000 and $20,000 for manufacturing businesses. It was $20,000 for the first year, and, or maybe, excuse me, $10,000 first year, and $5,000 for the subsequent years.
Yeah, I've just been handed some information, so the license can go as low as 2,000, depending on the type of license, which is a cultivation fee, cultivation facility. Definitely, the 10,000 is a facility license, but type one cultivation facility license is, the lowest is 2,000. So there is.
It's not a bakery, how much is it going to charge a bakery? A lot of the bakeries.
And then micro cultivation license is down to 500, as Director Parkinson had mentioned. So, there are various license, and it doesn't start license fees. Definitely, there is a $10,000 license, but it's not the, it's not the only license fee.
And what is, what is a $10,000 license fee for?
Type three cultivation facility license. Or type one, or type one is 2,000.
Almost the manufacturing.
So I just wanted to mention that there are various fee scale, the scale is various, and not, doesn't begin at 10,000. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments for Ms. Salk?
So just to be clear ma'am, you, you are speaking against vertical licenses, did I hear you correct?
No, I'm just, no, vertical integration, that's understandable, but I'm just saying you guys are kidding yourselves if you think you can stop that, if you're just going to be limiting it to the major corporations, because they're, they're professionals at creating all different kinds of businesses, they can create one business for each, each vertical component, and still be vertically integrated. And, I mean, my point was, you couldn't even find fake Guam products. And then if you think you're going to be able to stop vertical integration, that's what you should, you should be focusing on something like that, instead of prohibiting just little mom and pops from trying to get into this cannabis industry.
Thank you ma'am for your comment.
Thank you.
I have, well, actually, a clarification and a question, because Director Ariolo was referencing, there is a proposed scale of license fees, applications of fees for cultivators, but not for manufacturers, which is, as a bakery, I believe you would fall under. And so there is, the application fee is $5,000 for that, and then the licensing fee is $5,000, so it'd be $10,000 in total fees to start up, so, but you're testifying that you believe that's too high for a manufacturing license.
Absolutely, think of it, think of Tomorrowship shutdown, we're shut down, all the chocolate factories are shut down, because we're reliant 100%, well, let's say 95% reliant on tourism. And, you know, all these other bakeries shut down, so that we're reliant on tourism, how, how are you going to help us? By, by charging exorbitant fees, when, right now, my husband and I are baking banana breads and standing at Talaful Bay and holding up signs and selling them, just to be able to pay our power and our water.
So, ma'am, if I could, if I could ask a question, so would it be, would it be more, would it be more equitable for you if the, if the beginning license was a little lower, and then, once you start, you know, making money, if, if the, if the renewal license would be a, a little more hefty? Would, would that, would that probably help?
I, I'm saying, take into consider the pandemic, take, take into consideration the pandemic. Nobody has money, everybody's living off of their savings, we're living off of the CARES Act, I had to just, I can't even get, I can't even get bakers now, because they want to live off of the pool. They're getting eight, anywhere from $300, $600, $900 a week from Department of Labor. Why would they want to come and work just a few hours for me? I don't have, I don't have buyers, so even if I need, wanted to sell the mom and pop stores, and I can use a little help, they're not going to work for me, because they don't want to lose that $600 a week, or $900 a week. And, and so, yes, maybe for the first couple of years, why don't you help people out because of this pandemic? Even though when the pandemic gets over, it's going to take us a while, we're using all of our reserves to, to pay power and water, health insurance, our health insurance is $1,300 a month. So, I mean, I think about that, so that's, what is that, $15,000, $16,000 a year that I'm, I'm using, just to be able to try to stay alive in case I get COVID, or any other accident I may get into. And so that money that I could have used to pay $10,000 toward, toward the application fee, I can't, because I'd rather stay healthy, so I can't even get into this business that is, and everybody knows is a gold mine.
Madam Chair, if I could ask one more question?
Yeah.
Um, I, I hear your frustration regarding COVID and the pandemic, and the struggles as, you know, with your, with your company, and I, I really, you know, I apologize, I mean, I feel so, I feel for you, but could I, could I hear, what, what do you consider reasonable at this point? With the fee, I'm just curious, what would, what fee would be reasonable to, for the board to consider?
Well, just a couple of thousand, maybe, 2,000, if, if you have to, and, you know, whatever the, the alcohol, what is it, $1,200 for, for the alcohol license a year? Why can't you do that till people can get on their fee?
1,000.
Okay, I appreciate it, I, I just needed to hear, I needed to hear what you would consider reasonable, thank you.
No.
Definitely will be, you know, the fee structure will be definitely something we will all be discussing more in depth, I'm sure, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Salk, I, I think we cut you off a couple of times, it's kind of difficult on Zoom. Was there anything else to add to your testimony?
No, thank you very much, and I appreciate you listening to me and hearing me. And it's not just going to help me, but it is going to help a lot of other people too, thank you.
We thank you, we certainly appreciate it, you bring very, very concerning points, raise very, several issues, and I know that the board's going to take all of this into consideration, and very, very seriously consider it.
Thank you, thank you, and God bless all of you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Okay, I don't know how to get off.
Oh, and I just muted myself again. So, for those of, those of you who, I see the participants are increasing, and I see some people who are signing in the chat, if you're just joining us. Tonight, we are taking oral testimony from those who sign up. You can go ahead and sign up by just saying in the chat you want to testify, state your name, we'll note it, and we will call on you in turn. Next, we'll be moving to, I see, I still have Roland Kitequa signed up, and then I see Thesius Mendiola signed. Ms. Slott, let's go ahead and, I guess, go with Mr. Mendiola. Mr. Mendiola, if you're, if you're here, go ahead and turn your camera and your mic on, and you have 15 minutes.
Hi, how's it going?
How's it going?
Hi, so I'm, I'm kind of half and half, as far as with the, the vertical integration, as far as having multiple licenses. I do agree that, you know, they, you know, as far as for the cultivators, growing it, processing it, or at least choosing which process they plan on going, whether it's. or at least choosing which process they plan on going, whether it's flour or extracts or any of the other stuff. I believe that should, that they should be allowed to do that. My only hiccup is going to be on the retail side. Now, I also run three retail shops. And, you know, part of that, that, the retail side is to have that diversity. And if, I believe that, you know, if somebody were to cultivate, process, and then have the retail, and that just gives them the ability to kind of elbow out who, who they're buying from. And basically, just, just monopolizing just on their products itself, and pushing their, their items, and not allowing others to come in on that. So with that, I would say, you know, definitely a different person or a different, a different person applying for a license on the retail level. But as far as anything else below that, from the cultivation to the processing, I think I'm okay, in my opinion, to have them be able to, to apply for the same licenses. And then as far as, I know that it's been mentioned, but I wanted to support it, too, and I hope that the board will consider it. I know there was a little bit of clarification as far as the, the synthetic fertilizers, as long as it was derived from organic materials. That's also a very important thing as, as a grower, and, you know, making sure that we're, we're able to use those synthetic derived from organic materials in the grows, because it is a very important thing. Anyone that just grows organically knows the amount of issues or problems that you may or may not have compared to hydroponically with the synthetic nutrients, again, derived organically. So I wanted to support that, too, as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mendiola. Any board members have questions? Or Mr. Mendiola? Okay, thank you very much for your testimony tonight. Okay, I believe, okay, Mr. Roland Kitigwa, are you still on tonight and ready to testify?
Um, I guess I could. All right. So, half a day. My name is Roland Kitigwa, and I apologize, but let me ask this. I see in the, in the proposed rules and regulations, you have the Department of Agriculture as the regulatory agency. My question is, so which agency will be acting as the technical agency?
Um, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that I understand your question in terms of what the technical, was it technical agency you asked?
If you're about to start an industry, and we are going to have people growing, there's a big difference between someone growing five plants, 25 plants, and 500 plants. It's totally different. So my question is, is there a provision, did I miss it or something? With regards to who will be the technical, who will be providing technical assistance to growers? The reason why I bring this up is because of the fact that if, even the Department of Agriculture, anytime the Department of Agriculture has any problems, pests or disease, if they, if they come to the university, cooperative extension and outreach for technical assistance, all the professional companies, all the landscapers, all the golf courses, anything plant-related, there's a plant, disease, invasive species, the University of Guam College of Natural and Applied Sciences, College of Natural Resources are the one that basically is handling this. And so I'd like to know whether that has been taken into consideration.
Yes, and so the Department of Agriculture is the technical resource, and UOG is, is supposed to be the research arm of that, of which we do even today. UOG conducts all their research, and we apply the technical support.
Well, if I read it correctly, Department of Agriculture would be the regulatory agency, not the technical resource.
No, the Department, the Department of Agriculture is the regulatory agency for the farm, right? And we also provide technical resources. The Department of Revenue and Taxation is the, is the regulatory arm for the business license, and the Department of Public Health is the regulatory arm for the manufacturing.
Okay, well, okay. Well, the, the other thing that I wanted to bring up, just in case, to let you know, is that a lot of people have been coming to a number of, of the different people that are working with growers. And we traditionally, at the University of Guam, we have worked with growers, but we have to, there's a fine line because of the fact of that we are, when, when cannabis first started coming, what was first passed as legal for recreational use, there was a, there was a clear message from USDA that we could not engage in that. Because, and so I have asked for clarification with, because of the fact that cannabis is changing with USDA, with the federal government. While it is still considered a, was it Schedule 2 or Schedule 1 substance, the hemp component is legal. So, I think, I would, I would like the, the commission to keep their, their ear, see what's happening, how it develops. Because, once again, the university, because of the federal partnership, technically, the, the marching orders are, we cannot entertain cannabis inquiries. And, and, and like I said, if you're going to be having people growing, guess where they're going to come to?
So that there is nothing prohibiting the University of Guam, like any higher institution of learning, from becoming a research facility or, or getting a research license? But that is something that the University of Guam is going to have to seek or do themselves. But, but the Department of Agriculture is, is the technical and regulatory arm for the growers on Guam. Not, not UOG.
Okay, so then, let me, so then, in going over what I've read through, I do have a couple of things I'd like to bring up. One of them is going to be, um, of your, the, the thing about synthetic pesticides. According to, to the, what I read, synthetic pesticide is not allowed. And I'm going to assume that that means you're saying that organic pesticides are allowed. Is that correct?
It is naturally derived pesticides. Some naturally derived pesticides could be considered, organic and naturally derived are two different things. Organic has a specific language and coding that, that is used. We are saying that that, or naturally derived, any naturally derived pesticide is, is permissible. And the list is in, in the rules themselves.
I, and what, and, and with that, I would recommend that the, the board consult with Guam EPA, because according to US law, unless it is labeled for that particular crop, it, or has a, a US EPA number, you can't use it on that crop. So, I, I recommend that you get consultation with Guam EPA.
That is true for imported substances. But for example, if you are growing neem or tobacco on your property, and you take an aggregate of that water to spray, there's nothing that's prohibiting you from doing that. That's a natural farming practice.
That if you are claiming that there's a pesticide use, I, like I said, all I ask is that you get clarification from Guam EPA. That's all I'm asking, because they are the regulatory agency with regards to pesticide use.
Sure. Thank you for your comment.
The next thing is that you also talk about naturally occurring pest fertilizers. And you're restricting the use of synthetic fertilizers. On, with this, I'll be honest with you, I prefer organic and naturally grown. And I go that route, and I use as little pesticides or fertilizers that I possibly can. But there, what is this based on, that you, you would be restricting synthetic fertilizers? Because I, synthetic fertilizers are used in our food crops. So I don't see the problem with that. I, I don't know of any, any referee articles or journals that, that say that synthetic fertilizers cause any problems to human health. And as far as, as far as the environment, it, it's the same manner, you know, even if you use organics, you can still contaminate the environment. So it's a matter of education and proper use of it. But I really have a, I really don't want to see you tie the hands of the growers. I, it, synthetic fertilizer is a tool in the toolbox. And so I really ask you guys to reconsider that. And...
If I may. Half a day, Sarah. Half a day, Roland. Thank you for your comment. You know, we looked at the growing rules in the others, in other states, and learning from their mistakes. We now have the opportunity to create, you know, higher standards and elevate better ideas in this new, new crop, without, you know, without compromising the health of our land and our people. And we know the devastating effects of synthetic fertilizers. We know the recent article that did come out with, you know, nitrates in our groundwater. And a lot of that is from runoff or from synthetic fertilizers. So now that we have this new, you know, new industry, we want to be very mindful of that and set the bar. We have to have higher standards.
I believe there would, I, do we want higher standards? Do we want to protect the environment? And do we want to protect human health? Without a question. I do not doubt that. But there, it, it does have a place, and I believe that the, the way to, to fix that and to ensure that we protect the environment and that we protect human health is through education. And so, once again, I'm, I don't want to take another tool away from a grower. And I don't, I do not believe that I would see, and if we did see something happening out there like that, I, then, you know, there needs to be, it's, there's a bigger issue with regards to that. And I won't stand for it either. Trust me. I drink the same water, you know, from the, from the aquifer. And I, I don't want to use any of that stuff as much as possible. But I, but there is, there is nothing that I know of as far as human health with regards to synthetic fertilizers. And my question, and, and, as we're, as we're talking about that, I also saw that raw animal manure is allowed? Is that correct? Did I read that correctly? Is raw animal manure allowed?
I have to look through the, I'd have to look through the... Do you remember what page that's on?
Page 40? Yes. Residue substance, uh, producers maintain organic content, does not contribute to the contamination of prop lines, environment, and most residue substances. Must manage, it says must, must manage that. So, are you saying on page 41, line 15, are you saying that raw animal manure is not allowed or allowed?
Not allowed.
But you also have worm castings underneath it and fish emulsion and compost tea? Are you telling me those are not allowed?
No, it is, those are allowed.
Okay.
So, it's very specific in the language, if you read what is allowed and what is not allowed.
Okay, and, and so, and the reason why I ask this is because raw animal manure is really bad for the environment.
Correct.
My question is, how is it that you're allowing raw animal manure?
Yes.
Because under organic standards, and when I took the Amri Inspector's course, you don't use raw animal manure. As a matter of fact, the only time you can use animal manure is if it's already been laid out in excess of 120 days. So that raw animal manure...
Raw animal manure is not allowed.
But you have it there.
Yep. Uh, thank you, Roland. Hi. I see what you're saying. It is on subsection 9305. And so, thank you for pointing that out, and we'll just take a look at that again.
And as we're talking about that, I, I did not see... Talking about...
What did he say, 15 days?
Um, I, I did not see anything referring to commercial potting soil. If we're talking about organics, or growing organic and natural, natural. And the reason why I bring this up is because everybody right now is using potting soil and compost that's coming out of the, the big hard, the hardware stores. And I don't, you know this, but a lot of the, the soil conditioners and potting soils that are coming out, and compost that's coming out of these stores, they're actually derived from bio solids. They've been processed. There are 22 plants on the US mainland that are using bio solids, converting them into potting soil, and that's what they're selling in the stores. So if you want to go all natural, consider that. I don't want you to take that away, but I'm just saying that if you're going to be looking at apples, the apples, then, then do that. And let's not mix apples and oranges. Okay? And then on page 42, line 19, you have the term "natural farming." There are a number of different definitions for natural farming. I didn't see that in the definitions. Did I miss that? The term "natural farming"?
And Mr. Um, Kitigwa, we're looking, you're, I'm sorry, you said page 42, line?
Line 19.
Line 19.
The term "natural farming" was used. There are a number of different definitions for "natural farming." And so if you have a bunch of definitions, I think that that should be clarified.
Yeah, with, that's a, I definitely take that suggestion.
Okay, and then my last comment will be on page 43. You have on line 16, ash, you would not be allowing ash from manure burning? It's restricted? Is that going to, I'm going, technical person, I think it's, 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 it's not the same thing. But I don't know who the inspector is going to be, but they, they also make ash out of manure. I mean, excuse me, not, not ash, but they make biochar. And biochar is a very important tool with regards to natural and organic farming that are, that is being used. So, so long as the inspector understands that ash is very different from biochar. Because like, once again, I don't want to take that tool away from any of the growers. Okay?
Biochar is typically, though, derived from plant material, not, not from manure.
But manure is also used. And so there, it can be used, and it has been, biochar has been derived from bio solids.
Not always.
Correct. But, but what I'm saying is that it can be. And like I said, I mean, bio solids are in the soil conditioners that you buy at the, at the hardware stores. So, we just want to, and if you have a, a grower who has a problem with, with the soil being too low, then they might want to add biochar to raise pH. And so that biochar could be, you know, made from green waste, which is great. I'd rather use it as mulch. But somebody might be looking at what to do with bio solids or other forms of animal manure. So I just want to make sure that... So I just want to make sure that um biochar is um um what do you call it is clearly defined from ash.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
Do I have any um questions or comments from the board?
That's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you, Mister Kidwa. Um and then if if for you and for all those who are testifying tonight is who submitted oral testimony, you're also welcome to submit your written testimony um to until the close of our public hearing tomorrow at five PM um at uh by emailing us and let me see the email address. Guam CCB at revtax dot Guam dot gov. Just a reminder to everyone, we're getting lots of um good information and feedback tonight. Uh thank you, Mister Kidwa. Okay, um I am looking in the chat to see if anyone else has signed up. If there's anyone who's just joined us, I see participants kind of drop off and come back on. If you would like to testify, um we have a couple more slots open for this evening. You just need to identify yourself uh and sign up in the chat or turn your camera and mic on and we'd love to hear from you. Is there anyone else who would like to present oral testimony tonight? Mister Suzuki, I recall you wanted to um add some comment or testimony from your previous testimony last night. Did you still want to present some testimony this evening?
Hi there. Yeah, I kind of wanted to. Thank you so much for remembering. I wanted to maybe just put the idea out there to possibly um I would say mirror the laws for packaging in California versus Washington. I just um I won't get into them here. Um and if that's what comes to play, it's okay. It's it's a good set of laws. I just think there would be more creative freedom. Um but that's all. I'll just leave it to uh, you know, kind of everyone to see what that is and then maybe just participate tomorrow. But that was just something that when I was reviewing, I kind of saw to be uh a hiccup, at least in the manufacturing section. I just saw there being like limited colors, limited shapes. I don't feel like cartoon cartoon characters should be in there, and I definitely agree it shouldn't look like candy uh pertaining to the edible packaging, but I mean, just in general, yeah. Maybe California instead of Washington.
I'm sorry. So what was the suggestion of of um to you're saying, look at California's regs for packaging versus Washington's?
Yes. Yeah, just because I looked at the packaging, just because I started, you know, thinking about designs and stuff. And uh I just saw that it was Washington and I I have experience in Washington too. But our products, they're a little more boring. We have a pretty big tourist market here, so I just wouldn't want, you know, there I I like I said, I wouldn't say it needs to be all colorful per se, but like I have someone who wants to do a scheme of like almost a rainbow type thing. You know, and I could see how that could be construed as like for children, but if anyone wanted to use like a full Roy G. Biv creative color line, it might be a little it it is legally kind of strapped on that.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
Yeah, that's all. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys.
Any questions from the board?
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I did have a question for Mister Suzuki. Um and perhaps um Devon, would you mind maybe sharing the difference for us, like the difference between the California and Washington? So perhaps we might understand. Um it will help me because I am really not familiar. And so as we make decisions, it will be helpful.
Yeah, no problem. And thank you so much for asking. I would just say like down to a creative platform. Um I've experienced doing uh marketing and design for like the jars uh that and the edible packaging. So in Washington, uh they have a color palette that's limited. Whereas like in California, you can use a more full palette. You just can't um you can't make it look like, you know, children packaging. You can't advertise it towards children. It can't have like cartoons. But you know, if you were to say like digitally draw out like a two D uh colorful image that, you know, conveyed like a cultivar. Uh
What?
It wouldn't really be pretty. It wouldn't really be easy in a Washington setting because the colors are limited.
Oh.
Um and then the shape
To make a what? What what was that um thing you were talking about?
Oh, so sorry. Uh it's just more like if I wanted to draw brand out, sir, uh it would just be a little harder because then it would look not per per se to be depicted as a cartoon, but we couldn't really color it if we were to like follow the Washington law. And that's just because the the color palette, you know, and it even specifically says the color palette, and I've seen people get a little too over the top with looking at the jar itself, uh and I'm talking about enforcement and saying that's not the right red, you know, in Washington. And I'm like, man, like come on, whereas like in California would be as long as that red doesn't look like a lollipop or an action figure directed straight to a kid or like a trademark image of a cartoon cartoon character, you know. So I think the biggest difference is just the creative platform and freedom. Uh colors are literally limited in Washington. Um shapes are literally limited in Washington. We're gonna have a pretty big tour market here, you know, where people are gonna be able to legally try this for the first time and in a safe environment. So like colored edibles is another thing. In California, colored edibles signify like flavors or effects. Whereas like I noticed in the Washington law, you can't have a colored edible. You can only have it like a dull colored. I just wouldn't want it to like lose out on that proper marketed adult type, you know, platform. This could be a right way to do it.
Okay. In your experience, is Washington the most restrictive on pass um packaging?
Uh in my opinion, it is, yes.
And who's the most liberal?
I I would say Denver would be um, but in a lot of senses, when California adjusted back in two thousand nineteen, because we have to think like two thousand eighteen, they had a different set. So anyone that saw California two thousand eighteen packaging, it was a little more strict. So California went towards the Denver side and that allowed everyone that did the marketing side to be more creative. It gave them more colors, you know, just as long as your design got approved first. So like in the States, we had to get our designs approved. Like I made a little military helmet, kind of had to do it like very dull, no shading.
Sure.
Thank you for that.
Yes, thank you too much.
Thank you very much for clarifying. Thank you.
Okay.
Run the home stretch.
Uh we've got eight more hours tomorrow. Um we have fifty more minutes this evening. I wanted to make sure I didn't miss anybody who had not testified yet. Um if there's anyone who has just joined us, we can accommodate um another fifteen minute session, a testimony tonight. You want to testify, notify me or type it in the chat.
So tomorrow, we're starting at what nine, right?
Yes. I see Andrea Pellicani. If nobody is up, may comment. Um did you still want to provide an additional comment? We can
Hi, thanks. Sorry, I'm on the road now, so I'm a little bit dark here and scary looking, but uh thank you so much.
Just before you start, Andrea, it I just want to let you know that I'm getting hungry. Okay, I'm just letting you know, it's almost
I'll make it very brief. I'm gonna make it very brief uh because I do have a longer to I'll fill up my fifteen minutes for tomorrow. Uh but I did, um somebody posted a note and I was just gonna mention it that at least in the previous draft and and I tried to clarify with Craig if there was a second draft. In the first draft, uh there was no potency limit for per serving and no serving, maximum servings per package. Um and I'll give a full testimony on that tomorrow. Uh but I did want to 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 clarify some things because I think this vertical licensing thing is an issue. And I absolutely get it, you know, I absolutely get it. We want to give and I've been fighting for um local opportunities since the very, very, very beginning when a public health back in the day announced that they were gonna issue three licenses only, and it was only gonna be for the largest farms. So this has been an uphill battle. And and you know, what everyone has to understand is who controls the market are the cultivators. And that ten thousand square foot cap on the canopy canopy size is the most critical component in uh with regard to avoiding monopolies. We're not gonna have acres and hectares of cannabis farms here. There's no need to limit to a sixty forty or seventy thirty at a ten thousand square foot canopy size. If you can only own own one cultivation license and the maximum canopy space you can um have is ten thousand uh based on the uh you know, the calculations and how it's calculated, which is also a critical component. That is the single most important thing that you can do to preventing monopolies. Any further discussion is, you know, you're gonna need to balance the ability of people to stay in business. Now, one of the examples I gave yesterday was the retail shelving, right? Like if I'm at the if I contract with two suppliers, one supplier goes bad, the other one I you know, if I don't like the product that they're delivering, I don't have the freedom anymore to reject um what they're providing me because I'm not, I don't have the ability to fill my shelves. And again, at ten thousand square foot uh canopy, if even if I have a vertical license, I'm not gonna be able to provide everything I want for a dispensary, even though I have a vertical license. All it does is it allows a certain level of quality control from the farm level to the retail level for the retailer to have the option or the manufacturer to have the option to put some product on their shelves. It also gives them more power to be able to reject a super uh subpar product uh from farmers that they contract with because they'll still have some products on their shelves. I think uh, you know, turning it around to say that it's uh, you know, it it's going to create monopolies is not actually the reality of what vertical license, the option to vertically license does. It 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 actually does the opposite. It empowers manufacturers and it empowers retailers uh to be able to hold quality control standards to the cultivators. And if they don't, uh they can reject whatever is being provided to them from their suppliers and not go out of business. That's all that the option to apply for vertical license does. It does not create a monopoly that canopy size that you have is the single most important factor into limiting uh large businesses or uh giant corporate takeover. Um so I just wanted to clarify because I think it's being misunderstood a little bit, and I hope that makes some sense. Um and and maybe others can chime in on on their thoughts on uh about it, but that's from my perspective, that's what the option to apply for license licenses vertically uh allows uh businesses to do. That's all.
But thank you. Thanks, Andrea. I have a question. Um and I I'm not sure if you know this about that, but and how much can a ten thousand square foot can be cultivator produce? How much cannabis can they produce a year?
Um I I'd have to do some calculations, but it's about uh there are two ways to do your calculation. I think Will Parkinson uh presented that one day. I don't know if he has that number. Um his calculation for the pounds per year
Twenty-five hundred pounds per year.
Yeah, I think that was about. It was close to accurate.
A lot.
Yeah. I guess that's my I I I just wonder, I mean, it's it's, you know, we're in a brand new industry and so I I have, I don't I I don't know what we can assess the actual demand is. I I know there's, you know, the Miss Andrea, you testified, you thought the um the estimates by the economists who prepared the economic impact study for G V B was really conservative.
Um I do.
And it's just kind of hard to project what the 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 demand or how many pounds it's gonna be and what's, you know, where that sweet spot is between supply and demand.
I mean, just thinking about that.
Yeah, that is gonna be a challenge for you guys for the next five years of sort of you know, ensuring that the market is robust. What we don't want to do is oversupply, right? And we've seen that happen over, I I think it might have been like last year sometime. A lot of people went out of business in the Pacific Northwest selling, you know, they they couldn't give it out for free, so they had to sell it for a buck.
I'm I'm just uh
Yeah.
I I'm I'm a visual person and and a five thousand square foot facility makes something like eight forty foot containers with that amount of, you know, that that that's that's a lot, a lot, a lot.
Well, again, if you if you try to sort of gauge what's currently on the market and you look at our the the only number that we have for certain uh that's captured in an official report uh is an eighteen point three percent consumption rate that runs close to thirty thousand people. Uh and if you look at your economic impact study, uh I think it count somewhere in the tens of thousands, like thirteen to eighteen thousand or something is what they expected. Um it's not even close, right? It's like half. And and the goal is to be able to provide a robust market, right? So that people can go on the shelves, pick everything safe, everything's lab tested and to pull all the mar- all the business into the the legal market. That that is the goal. Yeah, right. And and I so I agree with you guys on that.
That that time that you're referencing in Washington, if I read the articles correctly, the 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 better quality farmer sold their products still at at the premium rate and it was the lower quality that had the price reduced. Well, it it wasn't like a whole market crash at all.
It it wasn't a whole market crash, but but again, it's not something that you want to see happen to the medium and small size businesses, right? Like, of course, when there's challenges
I think it's a quality issue.
It it's also a capital issue, right? If you can withstand uh the losses and you're a larger business, um you're gonna be able to stick it out a little bit longer than the smaller and medium sized business, even at a loss. You could operate at a loss for a much longer period of time as a larger business than a smaller, medium one can.
Oh, that's true too, but you know, uh any business person worth his salt will know that if you have a if you have a small producer that makes the quality of product that you want, the premium for that would go higher because the there's not enough product to go around. So that person actually would end up winning out.
Right, right. But but you know, I I just think a lot of people for me, I know a lot of people are gonna try to get into this industry and based on numbers, we know that maybe a quarter, that quarter of them will survive.
That's business.
And yeah, that's business, but I I just I am trying to think of how to keep most of everybody uh, you know, participating because it creates a more robust competitive environment. What I I don't want to see small and medium sized businesses going out uh because there's a supply issue and the supply issue came from a regulatory issue. Um the market should sort that out. The market should sort that out if, you know, all things you want to make, you know, uh everything's as equal opportunity um as possible, as as equal in opportunity. And again, the most, I just wanted to reiterate, the single most important um number that you guys have to prevent monopolies is that ten thousand canopy. Now, you can always, you have the authority as a regulatory body. Uh well, I don't know. I don't know if you can change that tier size. I don't know if that's in the statute. Uh but you could go up to the legislature and request, uh or you could have the, you know, you could change the license restrictions as you see fit uh to offer multiple uh if if the demand should meet it, but I think the ten thousand square foot, I'm telling you, it's small. Uh you don't have to believe me, um you know, but it's also a huge investment. You're talking about a five to seven million dollar investment for that, uh an industrial sized commercial cultivation. So it's uh one of those things, right? The bigger you are, the the, you know, So it's, uh, one of those things, right? The bigger you are, the, the, you know, the further you could fall as well.
So I'm getting hungry, but, uh,
Yes.
But, um, you know, the, the great thing that I, that I appreciate that you brought up is that, you know, we're, we're just starting out. And, uh, although we want to make the playing field as fair as possible, at the end of the day, it's really the market's responsibility on, you know, how, if a business is, 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 uh, producing a quality product, that product, that quality product will, will, will shine through. Um, and I understand that you're trying to, uh, look out for the small guy, and, and we are too. Um, but the beauty about rules like this is that it can always change in the future. And we're just, we're just starting out. Um, so, you know, patience, I think, from everybody, uh, this is all new, this is all new territory for any, for everybody, and there's going to be a lot of people who are excited, and there's going to be a lot of people who make a lot of mistakes on the way. But that's just, that's part of our business culture, you know, a, as a capitalist society, that you have to take these risks and, and, and nothing is guaranteed. Um, and so I appreciate your, your comments, and now what's for dinner?
Thank you so much, and thank you to the board members for accommodating all of us. We really, I, at least for me, I greatly appreciate the opportunity to weigh in.
Thanks, Andrea.
We appreciate hearing from you. Um, we are actually close to time tonight. Um, and I see John Savars, I did see your comment in the chat, um, asking to make a comment. I think, uh, we, we can't get you in tonight, but we are continuing tomorrow morning, and we'll be going all day from nine to five. So I, um, welcome to, I'd love to have you testify tomorrow. Um, and we also...
Madam Chair, a, a point of clarification. So are we going to have a lunch break tomorrow? Or are we going to have like a working lunch? We, should we just plan on bringing our own food or whatever to work through it? Or are we going to take a formal break at around noon, just so I can make my own arrangements?
I think we'll have time to take a break. How long that'll be, we'll, we'll assess based on how long, um, the, how many people we have signed up tomorrow. I mean,
Okay. Yeah, just, just to put it out there, I'm okay with, um, you know, just as long as it's all right that we can eat or whatever, turn off our cameras and listen, you know, during, I'm okay to have a working lunch as well. I, I don't mind.
Yeah.
Personally, I would, personally, Madam Chair, I would prefer a formal break.
Right.
Only because, um, sitting down for so many hours is bad for my back. Thank you.
It is. Well, we'll definitely take a break. Um, you know, how long that's going to be, you know, well, I'm, you know, estimating about an hour, um, but we'll...
So do we also get a brunch break, a tea break, a, uh, you know, I mean, Teresa's right, you know? Uh, it, we're going to be here all day tomorrow, and, uh, you know, some, we need some breaks.
I have every board member, every single board member has been present throughout these hearings, and I anticipate that'll be the case tomorrow, and I really appreciate that. And so, um, I think we can accommodate if someone wants, needs a break and they step away. We have the strength of the rest of the board, and then also, um, this entire, these entire proceedings are being recorded. They're being transcribed, um, and we are going to be, you know, I'm sure I'm going to be going back over some notes and some testimony to re-listen to things. Um, so we'll all have that opportunity, whether we're taking a standing break or eating break or not. So you won't, no one's going to miss a thing. Um, okay, so, uh, I just want to thank everyone again tonight. We're right about at the half hour. Thank you so much to our hard-working team at Rev and Tax. Um, Craig Gerard, Camille, I don't know if anybody else is there. Really appreciate it, and thank you to all our board members. And most especially, thank you so much to the members of the public and the press who have come out, um, to be heard and to weigh in on these proposed rules. We genuinely appreciate hearing from all of you. We, we look forward to receiving more testimony tomorrow. Um, I see there's really robust discussion in the chat. I'm also adding the link again to the landing page for the Cannabis Control Board in the chat. Uh, for those of you who actually haven't had an opportunity to review the rules, that's where you can review the rules, share the link for the notice for, so everyone can sign in and continue this hearing tomorrow.
I just like to add, I just would like to add one thing to all the listening public. You know, uh, on behalf of myself and the board, we really do appreciate and, and are, and are taking into consideration, um, your comments. Um, this is really going to help us, because, um, you know, none of us are, are really experts um, in the business. It's brand new. And then we appreciate all the breadth and depth of everybody's experience. And I just want you to know, uh, please, um, in, um, engage with us. Uh, please give us your, your comments. Please help us so that we can make sure that these rules that we put forth are going to be good, um, and fair for everybody, so that everybody can, uh, have a chance to, to be a part of this brand-new industry.
Here, here. Okay, um, thank you, everyone. Soodhushma Hasi, good night, and I will see, um, most of you tomorrow morning. Good night.
Thank you.